If all that are able to and like to, please rise for the invocation led by Pastor Robert Bob Somerville, followed by the pledge allegiance led by the chair.
Bow your heads with me if you would please. Father God, I just thank you for our mayor and our city councilors. I know they have a desire to direct and guide this city in the right direction. So our Father, I pray that it will be a productive session for this council this evening. But I ask that the spirit of unity would prevail here. Love is the door to unity, but humility is the key. Isaiah the prophet gave us the good formula for success, for counseling, when he declared these upon the people of God. The spirit of love, the spirit of wisdom, the spirit of understanding, the spirit of counsel, the spirit of strength, the spirit of knowledge, and the spirit of the fear of the Lord. Isaiah 11:2. May this be so in our homes, in our cities, our nation, and upon this council. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Somerville. The minutes from the March 13th meeting have been received and will stand approved with no objections. We're now at resolutions, special recognitions. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to first call Greg Patterson to the front. Greg is our Director of Parks and Recreation. He has some All-State Basketball Honorees, is that right Coach Patterson? That we want to honor for their role in the latest basketball rounds. And they're not on the national scene yet, but someday hopefully they will be. Coach?
Alright, we're in the middle of March Madness and we're gonna be recognizing some of our high school and youth league people that have been very successful in basketball this year. And let's start out first of all with Sierra Jones from Madison Academy. Sierra is a senior. She made First Team All-State, selected by the sports writers in the state of Alabama. And she has recently signed a scholarship with Belmont University. And just hold right here a minute Sierra, okay? Wait just a minute. And she's done quite well here at Madison Academy and we look forward to her going to a top-notch program at Belmont. So congratulations to you, okay? Alright. Alright, Josh Langford, you wanna come on up here? Josh is a regular now. He's in the 10th grade and this is the third time he's been here. If that tells you anything. He's First Team All-State, considered by many the top sophomore in the state of Alabama. Has done quite well, three times All-State and he's got two years left. So that's almost unprecedented. But he was injured late in the year and he and one of his teammates had to go out right before their tournament and they probably would've won the 3A State Championship. And they got all the way to the final four without possibly their two best players, if that tells you anything. So Josh is doing quite well and we're gonna encourage you to keep going. And we're gonna be watching you on TV one of these days in March Madness. I have a feeling we're gonna see that real soon. So congratulations to you and hate that the injuries happened because y'all would've had another state championship. Now, speaking of Madison Academy, come on up here Coach. This is Coach Andy. And Andy has won, Andy and his teams have won three state championships at Madison Academy so far and probably would've gotten the fourth one this year, but they had unfortunate luck that, you know, mentioned a while ago with all the injuries. And he's got a great program going there and he's got Josh and some other young players coming back for next year. So I think they're in good shape. They're gonna have a great run next year too. So Coach, great, congratulations to you on building a great, not just one-year team, but a great program. Congratulations to both of y'all. We'll be reading about you in the future, okay? Thank y'all.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Alright, this time I'd like to call up the Metro Coaches. If you'll come on up, Brandon Jones and Ronnie Elliott.
Coach, we might have the full council come up because everybody wanted to meet these young state champion eight-and-under group here.
If you'll come on up here, this is Coach Brandon Jones in the red shirt and Coach Ronnie Elliott. And Mr. Russell, I will say if you look at Ronnie Elliott, he ruined my last game at Huntsville High, okay? He ducked and dodged enough times that they pulled out a fourth quarter victory on us. We were discussing that just a few minutes ago. But this team, and Coach, you wanna call them up individually or you wanna bring them all up? It doesn't matter. Okay, I'm gonna give you the mic, but this team won the eight-and-under state championship, you know, a couple of weeks ago in Gadston. And we got about, what, eight or nine young men. And guys, we hope in about eight years, y'all will be standing up here like those other people were a few minutes ago. So Coach, you wanna introduce your team?
Just like to thank everybody for all the support that they did as we went down to the rec state. We also like to thank the whole entire Metro League for everything that they do to give our children an opportunity to showcase their talents. You know, so this season was a great season. The Metro League, each year at the end of the season, the teams that have the best record get to choose which players they want to go down to state with. Brandon's team this year was the number-one team in the eight-and-under division and my team was second. And so it was just a beautiful marriage for me and him to come together and work, you know, as a unit to make sure that these young men have everything that they need to give them the experience to move forward. And so, you know, a great season and we won it as we expected. The best basketball comes from North Alabama and Huntsville in particular. So, you know, it was the expectation of that. So we'd like to bring them all up. Tamari and Rice. Shake the hand Tamari. Congratulations. Darren Thompson. Jordan Curry. Damarian Turner. Austin Childress. He's not here today on spring break, but Terrence Robinson. His mom is here to accept his award. Congratulations. Jamari Arnold. Tyler Holman. Nehemiah Granberg. Thank you. He's not here today also, but a big part of our team, Damari and Tony. Okay, so these two awards were for head coach Brandon Jones and assistant coach Ronnie Elliott. And just to close out, you know, as you guys saw, all of these young men come up here today and you see the smiles on their faces, that's what we look forward to every day when we wake up in the morning, come to practice and do everything that we can to keep these kids motivated to doing something positive in our community. You know, we can only speak for ourselves, but we'll tell you this. You guys continue to do the great job that you're doing with our city, providing us with great parks and recreations to facilitate these kids with. And we're gonna continue to do everything that we can to provide positive role models for our community. So thank you so much from the Metro League for letting us come up here.
What a delight, what a delight. Our council president Mark Russell has some books here. These little orange books that we just gave each one of the young men. Antonio McGinnis, most of you know who he is, do you not? But our council president, Mark, you wanna say something?
Guys, I just want you, when you have a chance, to take a look at the book. Tony McGinnis wrote it. He was a great basketball player, grew up here, went to Texas A&amp;M, did great in school, and is giving back to the community. And maybe you'll learn something when you read that book and it's a great book about basketball and life. So we wish you well.
Do we have Laura Carroll in K Vest here? We have an award to give tonight and it's more of a resolution, but it talks about the national program that encourages our senior community to stay active and volunteer and provide valuable services to our community. And this is the second observance of the Day of Service, right? So you wanna tell us a little bit about the Day of Service? Yes, you do. I don't think we're gonna tell anything. But the proclamation, the proclamation talks about the power of the citizens through AmeriCorps and Senior Corps and the majority of these members make a year-long, full-time commitment while living at the economic poverty level to serve on specific projects for nonprofit agencies. And whereas providing health services and health education promoting emergency preparedness, tutoring, and mentoring of students, now therefore I, Tommy Battle, do recognize this as the mayor's day of recognition for national service. And in Huntsville, in honor and recognition of the citizens, AmeriCorps members, and Senior Corps members who have been serving effectively for 25 years. And one of the things that we talk about constantly when we talk about Huntsville is people who give back and people who give back on a regular basis. And I wanna say thank you for being, for representing the groups that give back and give back so much to our community without volunteers. Our community would never make it to where it is today. And it's the volunteerism that we find day in and day out with our citizens that make us a great city. So thank you very much.
You have a great senior teammates, recognize.
Good, thank you. And now Byron Thomas with our Human Resources. Byron, if you'll come up, and I think we're gonna have Gina Smith come from our IT department. And we've got some awards to give to some of our employees who have been in the IT department for doing some things that, they're efficiency awards, but they're also awards for doing great jobs and making our city just a little bit better for their day-to-day work. And Byron, you wanna come up and talk about this? And Gina, come on up too. And Gina's gonna talk about each one and what they've done.
Good evening. It's always an honor to honor our employees. They do a great job throughout the city. And we have a program in place through the city council and the mayor where we recognize those employees who add value to our services and to the operations that we have. And Gina's gonna talk about the One Stop and the Saire program that these employees worked on.
The Electronic Plans Review Project is part of the mayor's initiative for the One Stop Shop. And our team, we were dedicated to, and tasked with the, to actually implement and get it all ready. We had commercial residential plans reviewed that were submitted electronically, that's the goal of it. That is reviewed by nine city departments and also with Huntsville Utilities. And the initiative saves us because it's more effective, efficient, gets everybody in and out, One Stop Shop. And we also can archive it electronically, so we save there. This group right here, our team, is the Application Development Group. They, we completed this in July of 2013. And I would like to ask all of them to come up here so they can be recognized. We have Tommy Anderson.
Tommy, thank you.
Sandra Barnes. Sue Colley. Margaret Hong. Andrew McEwen. And Catherine Roberts. And this is an outstanding group, Mayor, and we're very proud of them.
And let me say this, the One Stop Shop was something that we envisioned, gosh, four years ago. And we started working on it and we had to figure out, A, how to get everything submitted electronically. When you come in to get a permit in a building, you want to put everything in digitally. And most of your architects work on a digital basis, so they can send it in digitally, automatically sent out to nine different departments. We didn't have to worry about somebody not getting their roll of vellum delivered to them and then sent back for comments back to a central source, sent back to the architect quickly so he can turn that around. We did not have to waste as many trees, didn't have to print as many vellums, didn't have to print as many plans. And we're able to digitally save all that. So y'all have really done something that is, the end result makes that we have a much more efficient city. We have a much more sustainable city. And we also can serve some of our population quicker and faster just because of the work y'all've done. So I wanna say thank you for all the work that you've done. The digital applications has been a long fight to get through. And just getting the learning process and education process has been a lot. But y'all hung through there, stuck with it, and made sure that it worked. And so thank you very much for the work that you've done. Gina, thank you. Okay, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you Mayor Battle. Tonight, we'd like to add a resolution to the agenda. The resolution is appointing Michelle Jordan as the Planning Director. The mayor's asked that we add that tonight. The chair moves to add this resolution to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. Discussion. All those for adding the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We'll discuss this under the mayor's time. He'll introduce it and explain it. Also tonight, 15G and 15J have been deleted from our agenda. That's 15G and 15J. We have no business with outside legal representation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing a city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the cleanup and removal of debris against certain properties. Mr. Binion?
The property identified in this resolution was previously declared a nuisance and authorized for cleanup and removal. The resolution authorizes for the assessment of the cost of removal of debris for the property listed. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that community development took action, and the cost for removal and cleanup of debris from the property. The cost was $181.94. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that an assessment be placed on this property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action and may wish to speak.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address accounts on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing a city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of the boarding and securing against certain properties. Mr. Binion?
The two properties identified in this resolution were declared unsafe by community development. The owners were given 30 days in accordance with the unsafe building ordinance to get permits and start work on correcting the noted violations. Since the owners failed to respond to the notice and since the properties were standing open and accessible, community development staff boarded and secured these properties. Attachment A identifies the owners and the dates that community development took action. The cost for boarding and securing these properties, the total cost was $852.68 with an average cost of $426.34. The owners received written requests for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that assessments be placed on these properties to collect our costs. The owners were notified of this proposed action.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address accounts on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Kling. Second by Doc Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on a resolution authorizing a city clerk treasurer to assess the cost of demolishing the property located at 3905 Gunsen Land Northwest, accessory structure only. Mr. Binion?
The property identified in this resolution was previously declared unsafe and authorized for demolition. This resolution authorizes for the assessment of the cost of demolition and removal of debris from the property listed. Attachment A identifies the owner, the date that community development took action, and the cost for demolition and removal of debris from the property. The cost was $3,949.55. The owner received a written request for payment and failed to respond, so I'm requesting that an assessment be placed on the property to collect our costs. The owner was notified of this proposed action and may wish to speak.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public wish to address accounts on this particular issue? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 6B is a resolution to declare a public nuisance located at 1512 McCrery Street Northwest, Huntsville, Alabama, and to set a public hearing for objections to be heard. This will be set April 10th, 2014, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion by Doc Showers. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have communications from the public.
Councilman Russell.
Sir.
Okay, there's, this is done under the Alabama Code 711320. And one, I'd like to show you the photos of the proposed public nuisance. This was a fire damaged property and the owner has been given time that should've been up around February 14th to clear the debris from the property. And once, what we do, the resolution actually declares it a public nuisance and then they come back next time. But under the law, we're to discuss it at this time, under the Alabama 711320, so. Get that on the record.
Do you want me to call for the public to be able to discuss it?
No, they will discuss it next time. But I just needed to go through that process.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling?
Could I raise a question I was gonna raise at the, at the next meeting? Would that be appropriate at this time?
Oh, any objections will be heard at the next time, but you can ask a question now.
Okay, okay. Well, one picture's worth a thousand words. We've seen the picture. I'm just thinking about the residents or the people in that area over there. Is there anything that can be done so they don't have to put up with that for another two weeks?
Not under law, you have to give them a chance to abate the nuisance or according to the law, we have to give them that time and that opportunity.
Thank you. Moving on. We're now at a presentation by the Green Building Council. Mr. Allen, if you'll introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Good evening. My name's John Allen and I was the chairman of the Green Building Council for the last four years at the Huntsville-Madison County Builders Association. And it's a pleasure to be here, Mr. President, Mayor, and Council. And I will, this is a presentation of a resolution from the legislature in Montgomery, but I wanted to give you a little taste of what this resolution is about before I do read it. As you may have heard, the Energy Code has been of great discussion in the last 18 months within the city of Huntsville-Madison County and the city of Madison. And if we go back, back to 2009, when Alabama took the stimulus funds, a portion of those funds were really slated to energy efficiency and also a creation of an adopted Energy Code in the state of Alabama that would apply to new residential construction. So over the course of 2010 and 2011, the state had a board, the Alabama Energy and Residential Codes Board, that met and said, "Our builder's gonna follow the 2009 Energy Code." So it's a state mandated law that we as new construction residential builders have to follow. Moving through 2011 to 2012, and I'm giving you a brief synopsis of the long discussion of the Energy Code. October 1, 2012 was the date that the Energy Code would be, would start, would be mandated. When October 1, 2012 rolled around, the different municipalities in Madison County, quite frankly, we were all struggling with how to implement this and how to follow the Energy Code. It was a mandated law, but it was an unfunded mandate and we were all trying to determine, how are we gonna implement this in our, in our, in our process? At that time, Huntsville Utilities, city of Huntsville, city of Madison, and the county really all came together with the Huntsville-Madison County Builders Association to determine, how can we best implement this together? And I'm here to say, congratulations to you and a thanks to you. All of our municipalities are on the same page. And to say that all of our inspection departments are seeing something the same way is a big deal. So I wanna congratulate you and I wanna thank Randy Cunningham for his leadership. I wanna thank his staff and certainly wanna thank Huntsville Utilities for their leadership as well over the last 18 months. We announced this with a press conference at Home Builders September 27th and we went kinda live with the program on January 1, 2014, this year. So again, we're the only, only county in the state of Alabama that's implementing the Energy Code like we are as one. And it's that kinda collaboration and cooperation that's, that makes our community a success. With the Remington Project, it trickles down to the Energy Code and just collaborating on things together as a community. So thank you for that and thank you for your leadership. And with that, I'd like to read this resolution, if you'll bear with me. The legislature of the state of Alabama has mandated a statewide energy conservation plan and the Madison County Legislative Delegation has observed an unprecedented spirit of cooperation between the three jurisdictions which inspect in Madison County. Madison County is the only county in the great state of Alabama which is enforcing the Alabama Energy Code uniformly between the aforementioned governmental entities. And this rare and highly commendable cooperation is focused totally upon the betterment of the citizens of Alabama. Whereas all new residential homes will be compliant with the Alabama Energy Code, thereby reducing the consumption of valuable natural resources in Alabama and creating more disposable income for the purchase of durable goods, thereby helping the local retail economy to prosper. And whereas the Huntsville-Madison County Builders Association, along with its partners at Huntsville Utilities, was the driving force behind the development and implementation of this program after almost 16 months of development and testing. And the implementation process of the Alabama Energy Code developed by the Huntsville-Madison County Builders Association, Huntsville Utilities, Mayor Tommy Battle, Madison County Commission Chairman Dale Strong, and Mayor Troy Trulock should be considered as a statewide model of cooperation and collaboration. Now therefore be it resolved by the House of Representatives that our sincere appreciation is offered to the Huntsville-Madison County Builders Association, Huntsville Utilities, the city of Huntsville, the city of Madison, and Madison County Commission for their tireless efforts on behalf of the citizens of Madison County and the great state of Alabama. So again, thank you for your leadership. We really appreciate it. Uh, we really appreciate it from the members of the Huntsville Madison County Builders Association. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. First up is Ms. Jackie Reed. Ms. Reed, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Jackie Reed, today my address is Jack Coleman. Later, it'll be determined. Thanks for allowing public input. I wanna thank you for allowing prayers in the city council chambers. I think that's needed, and I really appreciate that. Um, I wanna thank all people that prayed for the Huntsville Middle Choir that was on the trip coming back from New York. A piece of marble had flew through the second bus of the hundred and fifty, and I want to give credit to God for bringing them home safely, 'cause when they got to Virginia, they ran into a snow, my daughter-in-law says, and the buses were wobbling and a wagon, and we were just lucky that they all got home safe. And I wanna thank everybody for their prayers for that. I wanna thank you, uh, Councilman Mark Russell, for the invitation to the Eat Breakfast with the City Council today of Huntsville and the Madison Council members this morning. I'm sorry, I had a beauty shop appointment, and you know how bad that bothered me, 'cause she wouldn't change my appointment. I think you needed me there. If you don't, and I'm not there, just bring my name up. They know me as well as you do. I'm out there quite often.
And we don't schedule those meetings just on your beauty shop appointments.
I know.
But if we thought of it, we might have.
I know it, but I, I just wanna thank you for calling me.
Yeah.
It upsets me when I miss any kind of meeting where you all are.
Well, now we know.
Um.
Ms. Reed, the beauty shop results were, are beautiful.
I've been going for forty-five years before I ever started coming down here clean. Don't get excited. The utilities is hot on the agenda tonight. I want the utility, Huntsville Utilities looked into. I have a real problem what's going on. I got my bill. It was eighty-nine dollars last month, a hundred and eighty-nine dollars this month, and a hundred and sixty a month or two ago, and, and I called to find out why it was going up. Well, we misread your meter last month, so we added it to this month. I said, "Well, come back out, can you come back out to somebody and read it?" Well, I tried to go read it. I can't even see through the last two, read it with a magnifying glass and glasses. She said it's fifty dollars for us to come back and read it. Fifty dollars when you misread it in the first place? She said we took last month's bill and added to this month's bill. We make mistakes, they said. Oh, they making many mistakes. I want some of you to look into these utility bills and find out, are they being read? Are they making a judgment call? How are they doing our utility bills? They're too high, five and six hundred dollar bills. I don't have one of them, but a hundred and eighty-nine dollars was equal to, compared to. So whatever's going on in Huntsville Utilities, if you need me to look into it, give me the authority, and we'll check into it. But that's got to be done. Somebody's got to look into it. Uh, I just had a nightmare the other night. Old Madison Pike, I see, is on the roll, on a big roll. Um, I just was thinking, when you, when you name that bridge, it needs a name. It needs a name on it. I thought Jackie Reed on this side of Huntsville would be good, and Johnny Harris on the other side would be good. He's the director of the State Highway Department, you know. And Jerry Cox said he'd write up the resolution, but Johnny Harris won't put a sign up about his railroad museum, so I don't know about Johnny Harris, but Jerry Cox said he'd write the resolution up. Let's just give y'all something to think about. Hey, I'll be watching you. Call me at the next meeting if something's going on. Thank you, and have a good weekend.
Ms. Reed, Mr. Gertis from Huntsville Utilities is here. If you have any questions about your bill, he'll be glad to help you. And if you're not satisfied after the meeting, come find me, and I'll talk to you about it. Thank you. Ms. Jordan, if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
Tammy Jordan, forty-nine hundred Cotton Row.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just here just giving a word of thanks for our community. I'm, I work for Second Mile Development. I'm the community director, uh, for Terry Heights and Hillendale. I've been in that area for over ten years now. And I just, like, again, like I said, just a word of thanks for our community, community partners, City of Huntsville, Huntsville City Schools, Community Development, Food Bank of North Alabama, Family Services Center, Second Mile Development, Huntsville Housing Authority, and just a, just a note of a couple things that has been going on in the community. Uh, I'm very appreciative for the sanitation department, Mr. Terry Hatfield, and, um, we also have community meetings once a quarter, and, um, the Family Services Center and Community Development for the beautiful homes that we have in Terry Heights. Uh, we have a total of twenty-two homes, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, four on Powers that's just been rehabbed, two on Bell, and one on Wilson Drive. We also have community newsletters once a, once a quarter, and we have welcome wagons as well. And the most important thing, other than the homes that we do have, we now have a farmer's market that we had last year, and just very thankful, it was open, um, June the fifth to September the twenty-fifth, and it's every Wednesday from three to seven P.M. We had a community health day and, uh, health fair with Chef Will, Mayor Battle, we thank you for attending, appreciate it, and Kenny Anderson as well, appreciate your support, and the Huntsville Hospital Unit to help provide good and healthy foods in our community. The Taste of Health also, we had, um, it's part of the Huntsville Healthy Initiative, uh, program, North Alabama Diabetic Association, the Madison County Health Department, and WIC, Lowe's, and, uh, Chef Will as well. Again, thank you guys so much, and Dr. Showers, I did talk to you about other concerns, and thank you so much. Thank everyone for all your support.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Jerry Cox?
Jerry Cox, forty-twenty-nine Telstar Circle. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as a veteran of the United States Army, I am both saddened and happy to report tonight that during the last four weeks, we've only had one soldier killed in Afghanistan. A twenty-year-old Marine from Minnesota. Hopefully before too many more weeks, I won't even have to come to these council meetings, so we won't have soldiers still dying in Afghanistan. Um, Mr. President sort of threw a curveball at me there. Of course, this is football, I mean, uh, baseball season, but, uh, see, you've deleted, uh, item G, but I was just wondering if that if item G also contains the, uh, city buying the residentially zoned property at McDonald's School. And I guess, uh, since the, uh, TV stations reported that this was gonna be done tonight, and it was on the agenda here, everyone was sort of looking, uh, maybe the public would like to know is the prize is being deleted, if that's, uh, if that's feasible. Uh, and I have a neighbor, uh, Mr. President, a, uh, single-family residence that has three of these large green garbage cans, and today they were out on the side of the road, it was the pickup day for our area. In addition to the three cans, the lids were open on all three of them. The garbage was from two to three feet high in each of those cans. On the side of the road was, um, bags, garbage bags, full of garbage, boxes. Now, this is a single-family residence that's okay with the city. But, uh, this happens every week. And in addition, for the last two days, uh, from my residence, I can view this, uh, garbage sitting on their, uh, carport. So I wonder if there are any code violations here. And I'll yield my time, rest of my time to get to answer to those two questions, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, uh, fifteen G was pulled for the agenda because both parties hadn't agreed to a contract, so they were, it was pulled from the agenda 'cause, for that reason. Um, and then it sounded like the word code violations on the three garbage cans, and if you'll give the address, we'll have somebody check it out. Mr. Hamilton, can you do that?
(inaudible).
Sir, you'll have to go to the microphone if you're gonna ask.
Was, was the city buying the McDonald pro, McDonald property as part of G?
No.
When does that, when does that expect to happen?
If the land sells, then we'll come back and do that, but it'll be a contract, it'll be on the agenda.
I, I hope the public's made aware of that in, in sufficient time.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Pastor TC Johnson?
TC Johnson, eighteen hundred Sparkman. Good evening.
Evening.
Huntsville Utilities has come up in a, recently, uh, back about a year ago, there was the contracting out of meter reading, and we were told there would be, uh, substantial savings. At what one time can we expect to hear that saving? Will that, will the public know how much we've saved by doing that? The other thing is, since the meter readers have changed, it's strange that, under the contractors, uh, we have several more African-Americans able to read meters in Huntsville now, and so that's a good thing for, to happen. I just don't know why it didn't happen. The other, then the reason why I asked the question is because the last meter readers were given other jobs, and so I don't see how the savings, but I do wanna know if it will be a public information that Huntsville saved X amount of money by contracting those meters out, if that's a fair question. The other thing is, I'm told, and I've heard several times, that we only have very few African-Americans in the new class of police officers, and that worries me because we've said we have to make effort to change that dynamics, because that's part of, I believe, the problem in the citation disparity that we have within the city. Recently, I ran into two young men who passed all the tests and were never called. A young man called from Atlanta who was trying to make Huntsville his home, uh, the third young man called from Atlanta, trying to make Huntsville his home, and he's tried to apply three times, and never been told, never been called, never been responded to. That, that's an issue, I, I believe that's an ongoing issue, reason why we have the disparity that we have. And I'd like for the council, uh, to take that in concern based upon the disparity as I see in the citation issue, since I cannot get any factual information that tells me why it is that in six months, the information I have shows that three zip codes, the African-Americans live there got more citations than the ten zip codes in our whole city. So if you did the ratio, it was like a thirty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, that thirty thousand in three zip codes got more, African-Americans got more citations than the ten zip code. That, that should be something that concerns this particularly, if, if, and nobody is arguing about the validity of the citations, that's not the issue. I am arguing that I believe our city ought to be concerned and looking. If there's nothing there, fine, tell me what you did to show that there is nothing there. So the question about the meter reading, will we be able to get the number that we saved by contracting it out, and at what time we'll be able to get that?
Okay, we'll have to ask Huntsville Utilities, and we'll do so. There, they publish a financial report, and it's public knowledge, and so I'll call and, uh, see if I can get your specific question answered. We have no Huntsville utility items. We do have a board appointment nomination. It's the nomination of Alan Bibb for reappointment to the Madison County Communications District Board, the Enhanced Nine-Eleven Board for a term expire April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. This was made by Mr. Kling. Are there other nominations? Moving on, we're at ten A, approval expenditures. Ten A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, I move for payment of vouchers in the amount of eight million two hundred and three thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kling. Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Kling, do you have a finance committee report?
No, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kling. Mr. Mayor?
Um, Mr. President, for the record, I'd like to announce the appointment of Kimberly Ford as a supernumerary member to the Board of Zoning Adjustments for a three-year term effective March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, to expire on March ninth, two thousand seventeen. I'd also like to ask the council to approve the appointment of Michelle Jordan as Planning Director, grade twenty-two.
Mayor, if I could, we'll, we'll, we'll take that up right now. It's a, a, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, that the following person having been appointed by the mayor of the City of Huntsville, the position indicated below, is hereby approved by the city council to serve as such a position for the current term of mayor. The person is Michelle G. Jordan, titled as Planning Director, salary grade is twenty-two. Be it further resolved that the person appointed is provided in this resolution, she'll receive the same salary, and she'll be appointed to the same progression step within the salary grade applicable to such person as of March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, at five fifty-nine P.M. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Continue on, Mayor Battle, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, a couple of things, um, I'd like to welcome our department heads and their designees who are here today. This is spring break, and many of the department heads have left with their family for some vacation, so many designees are out there. Thank y'all for coming tonight, and, um, uh, hopefully we can move you on pretty quickly. Um, also, this past week, we launched Huntsville Connect, uh, and Huntsville Connect is our way that you can go on, uh, your iPhone, your, uh, cellphone, any digital media, and you can connect to, uh, through our website to Huntsville Connect. You can report lights out, you can report potholes, you can report, uh, sidewalks. Uh, my brother-in-law reported a, uh, lens not on his, uh, LED lighting that was outside of his home, and took a picture of it, and it was very good because it, uh, when you take those pictures, it also shows you the GPS coordinates so that you know exactly where that is. It's more of a seamless way that the City of Huntsville can take, uh, take, uh, suggestions and improvements and move them to the correct department. The correct department sends them immediately, uh, after taking care of them, sends it back to the, uh, person, and they know that their, uh, that their, their problem has been, uh, closed out. Uh, Huntsville Connect, I've told our department heads, uh, on Monday that this is one of the ways that we're gonna have some accountability to know that we're, uh, uh, that, that we're actually being able to answer, uh, these calls because of the seamless, seamlessness of it. We'll know what's open at the end of each week and be able to work on it. So, I'd like to thank all of our departments who are helping, and all the people in city who are helping work with this. There's some fifty-some-odd customer care representatives in the city who are all working on this, trying to make sure that we, uh, do this right as we roll this thing out. Um, and that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a couple of things real quickly. First of all, I want to announce a town hall meeting that we will be having, uh, in Lanier Lakes on April twenty-first. It will be at the Waltryna Church there at Capshaw and, uh, Waltryna Highway, starting at six-thirty. Uh, we're gonna be discussing things indigenous to the communities in that area. However, any town hall meeting I have, Ms. Reed is always open to the public, so you are certainly welcome, uh, as well as my good friend Pastor TC Johnson and, uh, and Ms. Michelle, I forget her last name, sitting back there. Uh, the public is invited as well. Uh, there's a gentleman in our mist tonight, Mr. Lee Nguyen. Uh, Mr. Nguyen, if you'll stand up for just a minute, if you don't mind me embarrassing you for a minute, please, sir. Uh, if you'll stand, sir. Mr. Nguyen is from, um, Gloversville, New York City. He's interested in moving back to Huntsville, Alabama. He has been the Executive Director of New York State Office of Children and Family Services. He has a laundry list of things that he has done. I sure hope you will make Huntsville your home, and we can certainly use your expertise in our city if you're still interested in working, so.
I am, sir.
He's, he's done a lot of things with youth as the Executive Director, and has a lot of successes that I've been reading about, so welcome to Huntsville, sir. Thank you, sir. Also, um, I see in my mist that some of my former students, uh, at least one of my former students, if you'll stand, please, uh, from Alabama A&amp;M University, and, uh, uh, I'm gonna ask you, um, are you all here on an assignment tonight?
Excuse me, s, sir, you'll have to go to the microphone, I'm sorry, and, uh...
Yes, sir, I'm sorry about that, Mr. President, if you'll give me just a, a minute, please.
Yeah, Ms. Culver, if you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Rhonda McFarlane, the third. I'm a student at A&amp;M, and I'm in grad school, social work.
Thank you.
Master program, okay, uh, kind of both. We're here for an assignment and we're here to get the experience too, so.
Awesome.
We're having a great experience so far.
Awesome.
Right, we got a lot to talk about in class, so this is, this is great for us.
Awesome, awesome, and just for the record, he's graduated from my classes, so I didn't make him come here tonight. It's a pleasure seeing you, Mr. McFarlane.
Nice to see you too, that's cool.
Thank you, sir. Um, also, um, Pastor TC Johnson, um, I must admit, sir, that your concern is certainly my concern. Um, I know that our Chief of Police is working diligently to try to have a police department that is more reflective of the City of Huntsville, Alabama. Huntsville is thirty, thirty-three percent African American. Um, we should have that kind of representation probably within every division, within city government. It shouldn't just be Public Works and Sanitation. And, and I'm just going to say this, and I've said it before, but if Huntsville were thirty, forty percent Martians, you know, those people from Planet Mars, the green people, if they're taxpaying citizens in Huntsville, they should have that same equal representation. And it's, it's not about race, and I, I share your view that a lot of the concerns that we do have could be resolved if we had a department that was a little more reflective of the community that we serve. Diversity is always good. If you look at our Supreme Court, and these are supposed to be our U.S. Supreme Court, some of the most intelligent, brilliant legal minds in the world, and they don't always agree. So that's why diversity is good because it gives us a different perspective. And I want to say to our chief, and not just to our Chief of Police, but to all of our department heads, uh, Mr. Hamilton, that it should be the goal of every department within city government. And, and it's not just African American, I'm looking at women, I'm looking at Hispanics, I'm looking at Pacific Islanders, Asians, we have a reasonable portion of our community that is an Asian community. Uh, one gentleman I tried to get on with the police department, but he wasn't interested at this time, imminently qualified. Diversity is always good, and, and we've got to get that mindset. And when I, when I talk about diversity, it's not to, by any means, be something that discrimin-, that is discriminatory against other people. It, it's, it's just that it should be a goal, we, we're, and I got criticized for saying this. We're not talking about going back with affirmative action, saying, for every Caucasian American you hire, you got to hire two African Americans? No, 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 that's not what we're saying, we're saying that it should be our goal as one city, one Huntsville, to have a city that is more reflective of our community. So my challenge to all of the department heads is to be cognizant of that as we move forward. Now, when you're talking about law enforcement, and, and this is a pet peeve of mine because I was one of them, and I still am, I'm, I'm very pro-police and will always be pro-police. That's why I don't want to serve on that committee because I am pro-police. And, 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 uh, that's, that's a unique group of people. Um, but it's difficult to get minorities. So what we have to do is, we have to go to those areas and really emphasize recruiting. Places like Alabama A&amp;M University, Oakwood University, uh, Spielman and other predominantly African-American colleges and universities, Alabama State University, uh, that's what we're going to have to do. So, uh, I'm offering my help, not in micromanaging, but if there were to be something that I can do to, to help us, because I know that it's difficult, um, because historically, African-Americans haven't always been interested in careers in law enforcement. So we've got a, we've got a challenge there, but I know we can do it. Uh, and this year, I keep thinking about if we can put man on the moon, it ain't nothing that we shouldn't be able to do here in Huntsville, Alabama. So if I can help, then please let me know, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Culver, Mr. Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President, well, had some, some pretty good events that enjoyed participating, uh, since the last council meeting. Uh, today, uh, I was the guest speaker at the University Baptist Church Seniors Group. Uh, Walter Neely had arranged for me to come out and speak, and, uh, we had a great, uh, had a great time out there and, uh, it was a good chance to visit with, and here's some good ideas from folks, uh, some very positive suggestions concerning city government, things that we need to look at, and I'm certainly following up on that. Uh, also, uh, my town meeting, as I mentioned at the last council meeting, was moved to, instead of the third Monday, it was moved to Tuesday, March the eighteenth, because the library was going to be closed that Monday night, or that Monday, for their computer upgrade, and, uh, appreciate the people who came out. And, uh, again, we had, uh, good discussion, good input and types of things that kind of gives me a good perspective on, on things to work on. Uh, this past Saturday, uh, I was able to participate with Fraternal Order of Eagles. They had a auction to benefit cystic fibrosis and, uh, we, um, had a good turnout there. They raised a lot of money and it was a lot of fun participating with them. And, uh, one of the, uh, things that was auctioned off, uh, for an undisclosed amount of money, Mr. Chairman, was a certificate that designates that person as a honorary Huntsville City Council member. So, uh, we, um, appreciate the good work that they're doing. Uh, that organization raises and contributes in excess of fifty thousand dollars a year to, uh, various, uh, charities here in the Huntsville-Madison County area. And certainly appreciate their good work that they do. And, uh, Monday this week, uh, was at the, uh, uh, meeting for the, uh, Reactivated, Revitalized, Reenergized McThormore Acres Community Watch Group. Uh, as I've said before, and I think all of us in the council agree, this city benefits because of the tens of thousands of hours that are volunteered by citizens in the community for all of the, uh, and I think it's in excess of a hundred and seventy c- community watch chapters, uh, throughout the city. And, uh, what they do, working very well with the police department, the CROs especially, uh, and the work, uh, that goes on, helps a great deal with the, with the quality of life and safety in, in our neighborhoods. And, uh, appreciate all the great work that's done by the community watch chapters. Uh, they have a, a citywide meeting that's coming up, uh, pretty soon. And, and again, we, we donate, I think it's roughly around twenty-three thousand dollars a year and think, you know, leverage that with all of the tens of thousands of hours of, that we get in return to combat crime, working with the police department, it's a, it's a great value. Uh, one issue, and of course, it's been a big concern over in, in West Huntsville, uh, either, take your choice, whichever redistricting plan is, uh, is passed by the final result of the city's school system, whether it's the school system plan or whether it's the Justice Department plan. Uh, both plans, uh, call for closing of numerous schools in West Huntsville, and there is great concern about the impact of those neighborhoods and, uh, how things are going to be in the aftermath of, of, of all this. Uh, I think we all know that an empty school building is not a good thing for a neighborhood. Uh, it attracts crime, people like to break windows, uh, homeless people like to break in and find a place to camp out and everything. And, uh, I did contact Dr. Wodensky and I'm very appreciative that he has agreed to come out, uh, to, uh, Holiday Homes Neighborhood Association meeting, uh, in early May to, uh, talk about their plan that they have for, uh, for dealing with those, uh, school buildings. And, uh, I'm sure it'll be a very, very good productive discussion. Uh, he is aware of the concerns from people in, in that area, but I think it'll be good for, uh, uh, the residents of, um, Holiday Homes and also I think other neighborhood associations out there are going to be sending members to, to, uh, to get information and to ask questions. So, uh, appreciate him being upright, uh, and coming out, and I think that's going to be a very good, uh, very good meeting and as far as exchanging information. Mr. President, that's all I have, uh, um, Ms. Reed, I hope they were able to solve your problem. If not, call me back and see what I can do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Kling, Doc Showers.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I want to acknowledge, uh, the Johnson High School alumni, uh, some of the members, uh, present, uh, here at this meeting. I want them to just stand and be acknowledged. Thank you so much. Uh, I, I had thought that they had signed in to, uh, be, be heard tonight, obviously they were not on the list. Uh, certainly, I want to, uh, thank them, uh, for their effort, for their concern, uh, that have, uh, they've been here several times, they had most of our meetings, uh, to say that, uh, they are still concerned, uh, about, uh, some procedures that were made relative to, uh, the desire, uh, of the citizens who reside in North Huntsville as it relates to decisions that were made, uh, in the past. And certainly, I want to thank them for being present here tonight. I want to stop here and acknowledge a gentleman by the name of Richard Kill. Longtime friend of mine, fraternity brother of mine, lost his life last weekend. And I suggest your prayers for his wife, his children, his family. Uh, tomorrow at Royal Funeral Home, uh, they will have the family visitation. And Saturday at Union Hill Primitive Baptist Church, they will have his final services. Uh, Union Hill on Winchester Road, where the Reverend Doctor Oscar Montgomery, uh, is pastor, uh, at that particular church. I was delighted this morning, uh, along with the mayor and, uh, our council president, John Oshewski, we had a chance to break bread, uh, with the Madison City Council, uh, for a breakfast meeting this morning. Uh, meeting that we needed to have had, and I was delighted that we had that opportunity uh, to sit down and talk about mutual opportunities to move this city-county, uh, forward. Uh, want to just simply say to you also that, uh, I will be representing the city, the mayor, uh, uh, on, uh, this weekend, uh, in fact, March the twenty-ninth. Uh, the, um, Southern Regional National Primitive Baptist Convention, uh, would have its welcome program. And certainly, uh, we would be there, uh, to certainly welcome them and, on behalf of our citizens, our mayor and council. Uh, uh, all of us know by now, if you have children in this city, uh, grandchildren, uh, that the, um, Ringling Brothers and Bonn Bailey, uh, Circus is in town. Uh, they'll start on Monday of next week, uh, uh, April the second and they're in on the sixth. So I wanted to invite all of our citizens, certainly our young people, uh, uh, to, and parents to support of that opportunity for our children. Uh, the Sixteenth Annual Anya Junior Countryan Ball will be held, uh, Saturday, April the fifth, uh, at Ron Ron Center, and again, we will be represented in our city, uh, at that particular, uh, function. Uh, and finally, uh, there will be a ribbon cutting, uh, Wednesday, April ninth, uh, at nine-thirty. The SFL Legacy Brunch, uh, is, uh, happening in that particular morning. Uh, we are invited to that, I'm sure others of the council and mayor, uh, assume is being also invited uh, to attend that. Is the Chief of Police here tonight?
No.
Is a representative here from...
Chief Jackson is here.
From that department? Okay, since the chief is not here, uh, then I, I'll reserve that opportunity, uh...
Doc Showers, Chief Jackson's here, if you have a question.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, for calling her out. Uh, if, if I might, uh, Chief Jackson, I reserve this opportunity until the chief is present.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Oshewski.
As always, I thank Jerry for coming and doing his update. Uh, I was with the mayor and the team here at, uh, Madison Ca-, uh, Madison City, and it was good. And, uh, I think we've gone long enough, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. We're now at thirteen unfinished business under action, which we have none. We have one new business item for induction, it's fourteen A, introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land on the east side of U.S. Highway four thirty-one south and on the north side of Caldwell Lane. This has been introduced. We're now at fifteen new business items for consideration or action. Keep in mind that fifteen G and fifteen J have been deleted. Are there any items you'd like to hold? The chair holds fifteen B, it's in beta. Are there any other items you'd like to hold? Hearing none, fifteen A is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number two, final to the agreement between the City of Huntsville McDonald Brothers Construction, Inc. for code park soccer fields located at eight sixty-four Old Highway four thirty-one. C is ordinance declaring certain IT equipment is obsolete and allowing it to be salvaged and sold by Mars LLC. D is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. E is an ordinance to amend budget orders number thirteen dash six thirty by changing appropriate funding for various departments and funds. F is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement with the low bidder, meeting specification outline and attached summary of bids for acceptance. H is a resolution authorizing mayor to the lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Alabama Constitution Village Foundation. I is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a special employment agreement between the City of Huntsville and James M. Bush. The chair moves for consolidation approval of fifteen A, fifteen C through F, fifteen H and fifteen I.
Second.
Have a motion by the chair, second by Mr. Kling. All those in favor, consolidation approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Fifteen B is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement between the City of Huntsville and Tolar Construction LLC for construction services of the new fire station number nineteen located at twenty-four fifty-five Old Big Cove Road.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Doc Showers, the second by Mr. Kling. Uh, Mr. O'Neil, can you, uh, describe this building, please, and then tell us how much it costs?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a two-bay fire station, approximately seven thousand square feet, uh, contains, uh, captain's quarters, sleeping quarters, uh, for the firefighters, uh, kitchen, a, uh, turnout gear room, a, uh, a weight room and, uh, a lounge. Uh, and the, uh, the contract amount, uh, with Toller is one million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Is, is Toller, uh, a company we normally do business with, have we...
Toller, Toller has bid on several city projects, this is the first, uh, time that they have won. They are based in Scottsboro, Alabama, but they have bid on several of our, uh, they bid on our previous fire station that we just bid, Fire Station Six.
Yeah, and I have no idea, they may be the greatest company in the world, or, I'm not saying, but since it's the first time, will we give them any, will we watch them differently, or will we make sure they do a good job?
Uh, yes, sir, we're going to, we're going to definitely, uh, stay on top of the project with them and, and, uh, uh, go through the, the, the whole process and make sure that, uh, everything's done correctly.
Thank you. Are there further questions, discussion? Uh, all those for approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries.
Thank you.
We have one vacation of easements, ordinance authorizing vacation of five-foot utility and drainage easements lots twelve and thirteen Buck Island Commercial Park, plat book forty-two, page sixty-three, the chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Doc Showers, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. We're now at non-rostered communications from the public, Ms. Reed.
I'm sorry, I'm back on the utilities again. I didn't get through. I was, uh, informed outside, uh, that the Huntsville Utilities had contracted out these meter readings and they had Tennessee license plates on their trucks and cars and things. I don't know who's supposed to be washing them, but only still a few months ago, my sewer bill was forty-three dollars. When I called about that, they came back out, gave me thirty-dollar credit. I said, I don't wash here, I don't cook here, half the time I'm not even here. How in the world could a sewer bill be forty-three dollars? So they took off some of that. There's too many two little mistakes at my house. So what are you thinks going on around the whole city right here? I mean, this, this whole thing needs looking into. I don't want to, but people are grabbing me and hollering at me. You know what's going on in the Huntsville Utilities? No, but I'm turning it over to you to look into every bit of what's going on. If they can't read these meters, they need to fire some people and get some people out there that can read them. I can't even see through my, mine to read mine, and they want fifty dollars because they misread mine. That's their fault, they say it's my fault. Fifty dollars to come back out and read that meter. That's not right in this city. We got good people in this city and we need to get their hands on these utility bills. I know it's been cold, but it ain't been that cold, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Just anyone else from the public, wish to address the council, sir, if you go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, uh, Walt Hennessy, uh, ten thousand two Hogan Drive, three five eight oh three.
Welcome.
And I thank you. And I'm, uh, here speaking tonight on behalf of Huntsville South, the civic organization in South Huntsville. Uh, we're going to have a program, we have, the first Wednesday of each, uh, month is a program meeting, and we're going to be having a speaker from the EMA, uh, telling us how to be weather aware, uh, with the upcoming tornado seasons and those kinds of things. So, uh, we'd like to welcome the public, uh, and any of y'all that would like to come. So we'd like to welcome the public and any of y'all that would like to come at six o'clock at the Bailey Cove Library. Also, you'll be hearing about Huntsville South sponsoring some fundraisers, a pancake breakfast, a golf tournament coming up and a rummage sale coming up. So I just wanted to throw those out there and thank you for allowing the public to speak and enjoyed the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Mr. President.
Ms. Culver.
I defer to councilman showers.
Dr. showers.
Thank you. I want to go to ask Mr. Hamilton. I've gotten several calls from citizens that the Child Development Center that is adjacent to the Shower Center is is not being used, is not is is closed. Could I get you to follow up on why that's not being used at this time?
Councilman shower, I can I can explain exactly what's happened there. Actually, they discovered some fairly significant maintenance issues with the facility that that made it not appropriate to have the kids in there. That was discovered a few months ago. General Services has gone in and and remediated that issue. It's now ready to to be renovated and put back appropriate for the kids. We've been working with the YMCA on that now for a few months. The project is funded and they should get started on here pretty quickly. The goal is to have it back open for the next school year. So by late summer, the intent is to have that project done, have it back open again in in August.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Culver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hennessy, I want to take this opportunity to introduce you to Pastor T.C. Johnson, who is the president of the North Huntsville Civic Association. I want you all to meet because you both have a lot of commonalities. We've got areas in South Huntsville that we've got to work on. We got areas in North Huntsville that we've got to work on. So you all exchange your communications information and I'm here to help with whatever I can do. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else needs to come forth, the council? We're adjourned.